Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 21st, 2024, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. First up tonight is the approval of our minutes from January 17th, 2024. Are there any questions on that?
Yep.
Motion, please.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of January 17th, 2024. Is written in the record.
Second.
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Daniel Stain.
And Daniel Stain. So that's 401. All right, thank you. Next up is the approval of our minutes from February 7th, 2024. Is there any questions on that?
No.
Not as there a motion, please.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of February 7th, 2024. Is written in the record.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and...
Daniel Stain.
Okay, thanks Dan. 401. We had on our agenda signed permits. Greg, do you want to fill us in on the status of that?
Yeah, late this afternoon, we did receive a request from the applicant for both signed permits on your agenda tonight to postpone it to the next meeting. So we've removed them from the agenda, but they should be on your next meeting agenda from March.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for that. All right, that takes us to a recommendation to the mayor and council. And there's one tonight for SDP-9558-2023, construction of 233 single-family units at the Stevenson Metro Grove Properties Zoned MXD Mixed Use Development. This is again, a recommendation to the mayor and city council and presented from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening, Jasmine.
Good evening. So staff is forward here for the mayor's recommendation for the mayor city council for schematic development plan application ASP, oh sorry, application SD, SDP-9558-2023, abandonment application AB-9653-2023, Roco waiver application RC-9560-2023, and a tree removal variance request. As shown on the screen, the subject properties are adjacent to the Parklands community and future Watkinsville urban core. The properties are Zoned MXD. The applicant filed an SDP application requesting approval for the construction of 233 single-family residential units. The abandonment application was filed with the SDP application to abandon 7,092 square feet of Exchange Avenue right of way. The Roco waiver application requested a reduction of Street B from the required 62 feet to 52 feet, and the tree removal variance request was for the removal of 29 specimen trees. A consolidated joint public hearing was held on January 16th, and during the hearing, there were comments raised about the use and design of amenity spaces, emergency safety access in and out of the residential development, potential impact to the specimen trees in the adjacent city park property, and residential units proximity to railroad tracks. Staff received outside correspondence from the public, which are exhibits 105 and 106 in the record, and the planning commission's record closed on February 15th, 5:00 p.m. So there are currently 174 exhibits in the record. The applicant submitted a response letter to questions raised during the public hearing, which is exhibit 142. So during the hearing, the applicant initially had proposed 233 single-family units, as shown on the screen, and it was noted during the preliminary report that the applicant is going to provide MPDUs that will be eight to 10 feet shorter in length and would need approval from the city manager. After further discussions, the applicant drew their request and revised the plans to provide MPDUs that are the same length, and this also resulted in the elimination of one unit, 134, which is on that corner because it wasn't able to meet the length with the market rate townhouses. So now the revised plans now show 232 single-family units. The affordable housing plan was reviewed and approved by the housing and community development manager. Other aspects of the plan, such as street and locations of amenity spaces, have remained unchanged since the public hearing. So during the hearing, the applicant received comments about the potential usability and design of the proposed amenity spaces. In response, the applicant provided an exhibit which identified the location and size of these spaces. As shown in the exhibit, there are four areas that will provide kind of outdoor activities. Amenity space number two, which is right adjacent to Parkview Avenue, serves as more of a gateway to the development and contains more of a water feature and seating and store water management. Amenity spaces one and three serves more as the open grass area because they only contain seating and landscaping. And amenity space number four, which serves as the, which is the largest amenity space and serves as the community park and recreational area because it contains the clubhouse, swimming pool, and hot lot. There was a question about emergency access, vehicle access from the new residential development. The city's fire marshal conducted a site visit and reviewed the proposed plans. He found that the development meets the Fire Code regulations and found that there are two ways to exit the development from Exchange Avenue and Blue Flax Place. It was also noted that if the road through the urban core is not constructed, then the development still meets the Fire Code regulations. The applicant received a question about potential impacts to the specimen trees on the adjacent city property. The applicant noted that tree information was collected as part of the natural resources inventory plan that was submitted and approved. The plan shows no, doesn't show any trees in the area of concern, and on the proposed development side, the grays are hired. The plan includes retaining walls, sound fences that will further protect the homes from any potential damages from trees. And lastly, there was a question about other residential properties that are located adjacent to railroad tracks. Staff did an analysis and found five residential developments that are adjacent to the railroad tracks. That includes the Deadland property, the Long Draft Oaks in Bennington area, and further going west, we have the Means Edition and the Deer Park Residential Community that has homes right adjacent to the railroad. So we have homes in the city that are close to the railroad tracks. So staff has reviewed the applicant's response letter and has said the opinion they have adequately addressed the comments raised during the hearing. Staff is supportive of the proposed SDP plans, abandonment application, Roco waiver requests, and tree removal variance. Staff is of opinion that development will contribute to the city's overall housing stock and provide future support for the future walking mills, walking mill town center urban development core. The proposed building materials include, are compatible and harmonious with the adjacent Parklands neighborhood, and the plan is also in performance with the approved sketch plan. While staff is supportive of the proposed application, staff's opinion that there is still outstanding issue about the design of Parkview Avenue. And as noted in the preliminary staff analysis, staff recommends that Parkview Avenue be designed as a two-lane street along Stevenson Metro Frontage and short segment between Urban Avenue and Exchange Avenue, as opposed to the four-lane section as shown in the SDP plans, as on my screen. To the left is what is being proposed on the SDP, and to the on the right is a sketch of what staff is recommending. In the record, as exhibit 140, Public Works Engineering Services Division Chief Brian Fields provided a detailed memo for the recommendation for Parkview Avenue to be a two-lane road. The proposed two-lane configuration of Parkview Avenue provides numerous benefits, such as short pedestrian crossing distances, reduced potential for cut-through in the residential neighborhood, increased on-street parking, elimination of confusing transitional segments between four-lane and two-lane sections, lower construction and maintenance costs, and reduce impervious area. In the record, there is a letter from the urban core owner, Pete Henry, requesting to maintain the four lanes on Parkview Avenue. Mr. Henry is of opinion that the reduction of four lanes to two will jeopardize the future tenants and the development to the urban core. So staff is recommending a condition of approval that Parkview Avenue be designed and constructed with the Stevenson Metro Development as a two-lane street, as opposed to the four-lane section shown on the SDP application. So I do want to note in my staff analysis, I had recommended four conditions, but I do want to add a fifth condition, and it's more of just a site plan cleanup. So condition number five is going to be applicant must submit revised plans to address staff's outstanding comments related to site plan cleanup prior to final signature of the plans. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have this evening. I do have the project team, and I have Brian Fields from Public Works to also answer your questions.
Thanks, Jasmine. Questions?
So I just have one quick question. I mean, I read through this. So the MDP, MDP units will have the same footprint as the market rate?
Yeah, they'll be the same length. They'll still be 20 feet width.
Okay, the other will be 22, but that's still a good thing.
All right, any other questions?
Big bagger.
No, no questions.
Okay, let me raise a couple of questions. Recognizing the records close, this isn't really a general question, just wanted to clarify a couple of things. With the access through the urban core, so as the SDP stands out, there's a road that cuts through the urban core and will ultimately connect to this portion of the site from Watkins Mill more directly than the current plan will have arranged. So down the road, if something comes up where the urban core is reconsidered, rethought, replanned, we can still maintain that connection, and we can still rest assured that the SDP will carry the day in terms of that connection. Is that right?
So, is that your question again?
Right, so on the SDP, there is a connection through the urban core that from Watkins Mill down around a little circle, straight through, and it connects to this parcel, right?
Yeah.
It won't be built until the urban core gets developed.
Yep, that's correct.
Right, okay. So if in the future, there is some force at work to redevelop the urban core plan in a different way, for, you know, market reasons, for tenure reasons, or it might be, we can still count on that connection being a part of the plan? There's...
Yes.
Okay. Does the key lot plan vest now or with the site plan?
So I believe the key lot is vested with the SDP.
It does, okay. So can you pull it up? I should probably tell you which exhibit it is, but I don't know.
Package page 99.
Nicely done.
You said the key lot plan?
Yeah. And if you can zoom in down toward the, I guess, the big amenity at the bottom, the recreational amenity. So I guess the assumption is going to be that those elevations are all front elevations, so there's no real reason to identify them as key lot per se, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then everything to the, so the, everything to the north of that, we're going to consider that just an alley anyway, so that wouldn't be, that would have the normal alley sort of elevations. And then on the, trying to think here where, if you look at the northeast corner, plan northeast, there are two, so... I'm going to answer my question, but just to be clear, what's labeled Alley A Private over to the right, over to the... Those end units will always feel like they're embedded in two alleys as opposed to any kind of front or prime access road, right?
Yeah.
Unlike, you know, with some plans, we have like cottage units that are tucked back on a muse or in an alley condition. Those two will, that Alley B and Alley A, those are just always going to be really behind the scenes and not play to a main road, I guess. To the, yeah, right, right there, where you see where it says Alley A Private and intersects with...
With the street there.
No, right, east, right there, that T.
Mm-hmm.
So that is embedded in two alleys. That's the personality of that space. It's never really going to play as a front of any of those units.
No.
Sorry, okay. And then over on the far east side of the site plan, where that little leg of road and parking bumps up against the Metropolitan Grove right of way, I know there's lots of issues in play about whether or not that'll ever connect, but it could, right? That could be a connection if Metropolitan Grove was ever built through or anything was developed there, but I know there's issues with CXS, so I don't want to bring that up tonight. But that's the idea, that could always be connected if necessary, right?
Yep, that's correct.
There's not, there's no reason it couldn't, I guess, if a road is developed there.
It does envision. We don't want to landblock, you know, future...
It's, it's just, you could tell me there's a strip of land there that will never be crossed, and that would answer the question too, but if that's ever developed as a road, they can connect.
Yep.
Okay. The typical lot planning plan in the SDP package, there was some notion about, or mentioned about how HVAC units, all of the housing units would be on the back somewhere, right? The typical planning diagram plan shows a driveway, solid planning, and then the next property, right? There's really no place to do that. So does that vest now or at the site plan? Can we see more detail of that, of how that really plays out, I assume at site plan?
The location of the HVAC units in the rear of the townhouses are typically result reviewed through the HOA docs. A lot of our communities, right, they do sit over property lines. It's something we do review as part of the final site plan submission.
Okay, so we'll see that kind of a full...
Cross maintenance requirements.
Let's see a more realistic depiction of that, because right now, it's in the typical planning diagram, it's full, just full of plants or driveway, but nowhere to really do ground mounted utilities or HVAC units or anything.
You're talking about the little strip between the two driveways, yes. Yeah, we can have that resolved more as part of the final site plan.
All right. And of course, we'll see the park design as part of final site plan as well, so we know the areas that are dedicated with the actual development of it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Just two or three things that came up as I was reviewing this. One, I want to make sure we're clear. The design guidelines are included in this packet. Are they being approved as part of the SDP?
Yep, that's correct.
So within those design guidelines on... There's a page that shows common site elements. It's on page 108. And I think this, in my mind, looking at the design guidelines is sort of what's going to govern the existence of this after it's built. There seems to be a lot less clarity here on as far as green space, open space, amenity space, that's identified on this plan in the design guidelines versus what's identified on the nice site plan that you showed, right? There's only one big open green space identified in the design guidelines as, you know, the open lawn area, and it's down by the, yeah, it's, yep, that. And this actually is even missing, in this version, it's missing the open lawn area. So the one I, the packet I downloaded this morning, or this afternoon, on this page has a green bubble down in the bottom right corner for open lawn area. I guess that was just my question in looking at this, that it seems to be lacking a lot of the information that's in the site plan as far as amenity space, open space, you know, that's probably valuable to have in a design guideline for the future.
Well, the approved final site plan will rule, right, not the design guidelines. So if the park is in there in the final approved site plan, that'll maintain that element as approved.
True.
It's going to be changed in the future. They come in for a new application, that planning commission would look at those guidelines perhaps to look at what could be changed.
Your point.
I think that governs if someone wants to build something on it or change the use of it, but if I'm looking at this in the future about, you know, what is the purpose of this space, what are the amenities that are supposed to be there, you know?
Yeah, what does this exhibit actually do for you? Because this is in the design guidelines, right?
Yes, it's in the design guidelines.
What is this actually dictating? This blue dots, blue...
So that shows location of benches and seating. So the intent of the design guys just show kind of what's being envisioned. Nothing doesn't come final until a final site plan comes in. That's where, you know, finals and furniture, but the final looks, like what's going to be there. So this only kind of serves kind of...
But I think Phil's question was good. Where in other neighborhoods that have adopted design guidelines, if there's a change made later, so like, say the HOA wants to turn one of those little spaces into a baki court or something, that's okay. But this would suggest that they can if there's benches in that little blue square, you know what I mean? Like, is that what this will do? And do we care? I don't know, but...
Yeah, I mean, it might, if this drawing didn't exist, I wouldn't have even asked the question.
Yeah, it just seems like a funny little thing to have.
Going from the site plan to this, it was like, wait a minute, what are we trying to, what's the difference here and why is there a difference? It was just a...
Or the site plan could come in with the benches farther back in the big rectangular park, and that'd be okay if it was designed well. So I'm just trying to get a sense here if this is even a needed thing, or if it was part of the checklist of diagrams that have to be part of a design guideline, to be thorough.
It was previously iterative to this, what's coming site plan.
Yeah, I think the intent of this was more, again, to kind of show a general how it could look and be laid out in the future, provide some guidance. I understand the comment, though, again, the commission doesn't feel it's a necessary element of the design guidelines. It can definitely be removed as a page with part of the final approval of the SDP and the guidelines. And we can make that a recommendation that goes that forwards to the mayor's...
Yeah, it just seems like it would make a lot of difference.
Yeah, I just asked, wanted to ask, ask the question. My only other question, and I think I knew the answer to this, but, you know, when I was looking at the green space plans within the site plan drawings that were submitted and the calculations, there are, you know, we're basically saying that along the front of all of these townhouses, from curb line to front of building, that whole space is green space. And, you know, am I correct that this is a little bit of a, a little bit of an interpretation of how the code is written? Because, you know, in some areas of this plan, you look at that strip of green space, and it's 70% covered in pavement by the time you get the sidewalks, the stoop, and, you know, three plants there. So to me, that's a little like, is that really green space?
That's the whole reason we're redoing the code, isn't it?
Yeah, the green space includes sidewalks, so I think a lot of the tools is going to be clarifying what's...
It's been the last 27 years explaining to people that, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a misnomer, for sure.
I couldn't help but just poke at that, because that plan is so glaringly...
It's literally the thread, I think, that we pulled. The sweater's gone, so now we're redoing our code.
All right. I'll stop pulling.
All right. We won't have to soon.
That's a good comment. Any other questions? Regarding the staff's recommended second condition on the Parkview Avenue road section at two lanes versus the SDP proposal of four. Cry me if I'm wrong, but given the current proposal for development, the two-lane road is appropriate. That's why staff came up with it. Again, if something happens with the urban core that somehow demands a different road configuration there or width or whatever it might be, that could certainly be brought back as part of that site plan, right? That would be within the kind of realm of okay.
Because the parking counts right now aren't including that off-site parking, right, the public, yeah, so.
But as a road section, I mean, I think our general practice is to resolve them. If it's four lanes, it goes somewhere, right? Or if it's two lanes, it, you know, it transitions to wherever it needs to go in an appropriate geometry. So if four lanes, they'll go nowhere without any other else developed around it, doesn't make sense. Now, and Matt, to use yours, we won't pave anything more than we need to, right?
It gives me Harper, you know?
So it's a reasonable condition, it seems to me, but there's flexibility later on if there's a necessity to do something different with the road.
If the urban core density does change and doesn't necessitate a four-lane road as reviewed part of the traffic analysis...
Yeah.
Then it definitely can be explored about what improvements we need to make to bring it into performance with the four-lane section.
Yeah, but if that happens, they're not going to be talking about a four-lane road in this little, whatever, 300-foot stretch. They're going to be talking about a four-lane road that rings the whole urban core. So this makes total sense to me.
Yeah.
And deal with the urban core if, the unlikely event that that becomes an issue.
Yeah, I mean, it could be something for imagining, you know, it could be the B3 street becomes a, you know, big throughput street, the Town Center Boulevard becomes a big throughput street, a third, you know, throughput street that forms a, you know, figure eight in the commercial center, you know, with some very substantially dense buildings. It could become something that needs a backend loop that connects those large roads, but it seems like a big risk to take, and maybe at the time, too, we might want to consider separating those from residential buildings.
Right, right.
Safety here becomes really important.
Traffic calming.
Traffic calming with the parallel parking is really, really critical, so I think for obvious sakes, you know. The engineering is there too, but...
Okay. On the waivers.
Can the applicant speak on the issue about the Parkview Avenue? I know the record's...
Record is closed. I don't think we asked any questions. It needs an answer, though, do we? Did we?
No, I think I understand. Yeah, the letter was in the packet and thorough, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we, did we ask a question? I don't...
No, we're all just yelling.
If I may, there might be an issue with the condition from the applicant's point of view. If you'll take, if you'll take a opportunity, it's up to you, though, obviously.
Well, the record's closed. So when's the...
Mayor and council's record does remain open, so any concerns with the commission's recommendations tonight can be included as part of their packet for their consideration.
When is their record closing?
On the 28th.
28. All right, so that's where it can go, getting to their record. Let's make sure we discuss the waivers. Which one do you want to do first? Anybody have any opinions on trees?
Trees.
Trees.
Trees. We can do the abandonment application.
Yeah. What's that?
The abandonment application.
Okay, there you go. Okay.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Any concerns?
No.
No?
Okay. No, it's a great, it makes total sense, especially to sort of push out these townhouses and create a better residential environment.
Right.
It's great, yeah.
Okay. And then on the, on the tree issue, I know at face value, there are very few conditions where we would think this is a good idea to, with those kind of numbers of specimen trees, but I think...
Huge.
Yeah, but I think it's not inconsistent with what happened with some of the earlier development on this side of the parcel. So any issues with the waiver?
Nope.
No.
Okay. All right, so we have a recommendation form from the staff, and there are actually three motions, right?
Yes, there's two motions.
Or two, excuse me, two.
Is it three, three motions?
It's three motions.
It's three, yeah. So in order, any issues with the recommended, the recommendation to mayor and council, the SDP itself with the five conditions? Discussion, any concerns? Okay.
It's a great application. We've looked at it for quite a while. I'm excited about the whole thing.
I mean, anytime we can add housing, it's super.
It's true, too. And, you know, on the trees issue, on the trees issue, we do still have this enormous city park behind it, all the city Gaithersburg land that's behind it, good retention of tree coverage and groundwater replenishing land behind it. The slopes, I think the, again, the abandonment speaks to the other road as well, that we're trying to tighten up these roadways. So it very much, you know, coincides with our need to tighten up the other road and make that a two-lane with parallel parking. So that all makes sense to me.
All right, good. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, recommend approval of SDP 9269-2022 to the mayor and city council with five conditions.
Second.
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. And then we have a motion for AB-6953. Which one is that?
That's the abandonment.
That's the abandonment, okay. Pretty abandonment. Is there any discussion on the abandonment?
No.
All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, recommend approval of AB-9653-2023 to the mayor and city council.
Second.
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. I apologize, I took that out of order based on our agenda, but the, but the next motion would be for the, for RC-956.
It's the Roco waiver.
Roco waiver, right. Any concerns on that?
No.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings and the final staff analysis, recommend approval of RC-9560-2023 to the mayor and city council.
Second.
It's moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Okay, one more time, Jasmine, the mayor and city council's record...
This is on February 20th.
February 20th. So if there's any other concerns with the recommendation, again, this is just a recommendation. Action will be taken by the mayor and council. Please feel free to submit concerns to their record. Thanks, all. Good luck. Good project. All right, that takes us to site plans. There's one tonight for SP-9569-2023, construction of a new 234-unit multifamily building at 103-203 Spectrum Avenue in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone, and this is for final site plan and presenting from staff again is Jasmine Forbes.
Again, so staff is forward to present final site plan application SP-9569-2023. This application is based on schematic development plan SDP-9269-2022, which was approved by the mayor and city council on November 7th, 2022. As mentioned on the screen, the subject properties are located at 103 and 203 Spectrum Avenue. The applicant's requesting approval for a 234-unit multifamily residential building. This application comes for the planning commission in accordance with Section 24-168, which requires the planning commission to grant final site plan approval. The applicant's also requesting approval for an amendment to final forest conservation plan application EMV-9570-2023 pursuant to Section 22 of the City Code. And this evening, I have Matthew Walters from Pitt Projects who's going to do the presentation this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Jasmine. All right, so as she said, I'm Matt Walters, I'm with the applicant, Pitt Projects, I think technically, BPTC 18 LLC. Just as a refresher, it's been since last October, I think October 2022 that you've seen this. This is the apartment project in the Spectrum development that's along 355 across from Travis Avenue on Spectrum Avenue. And here we go. As you see right there. The zoomed in version, okay. Going back to 2021, we came in with an amendment to the sketch plan. This was originally a bank pad, office space, marketed as such for years. Never got any traction with that, so we came in with this idea to do multifamily here. And so that was amended in 2021. 2022, we brought the SDP forward, and it was approved with one official condition, which was that we improved the connectivity within the building from the F1 and F2, the lower level units, to the amenity space. And then one unofficial condition that staff had asked us to enhance the facade along 355. So this was the amenity exhibit that we brought forward and we were told no. And it makes sense, we're glad you did that, the project got a lot better. But in this iteration, you can see that those units on that side, there were three options for getting the amenity. One, walk through the garage. Two, go outside. And three, go up level, go over and down level. So as a result, we went back and we brainstormed how we can fix this. And it turned out we ended up with four extra units when we went to solve this problem, which is great. So the way we did that was previously, you would come in this garage at the amenity slab, like at that elevation, and you would stay flat here, and then the ramp in the garage would start ramping down here. And you had, by this point, you had like a double height space in the garage, and pretty tall ceilings here, but not quite double height. And so we went back and decided to start the ramp back here. So by the time you get to where this connection point had to happen, the garage was at a lower elevation, and you could put a bridge. It's a bridge, but it's, it's connecting this elevation to, or this slab to this slab, which is at the same level. So we put that bridge in, and we were like, well, now we've got all this space that looked kind of awkward in plan, and in reality would look awkward. And so we were able to fit the four units there. So now you've got safe, you won't know any difference, you're not in a garage, you're, it'll be a corridor just like all the other residential corridors. So that's now the access. And as another nice bonus, I know going back to earlier on in the project, there was talk about making this elevation lively, and we, we accomplished that with the outdoor exercise equipment and all that. But we also, now that we've added those units, instead of this being grills looking into the garage, you've got units. So in two ways, it, it really helped the project. Here's that elevation, I don't know whether I can zoom in on here, probably not, right? This is the elevation we were asked to enhance. Previously, we had a lot of precast elements, sills, headers, things like that on the primary facade where the entrance is. And then when you got to this facade, it would turn to brick headers, brick sills, still nice, but not the precast. So after that comment from staff, we went back and added in those precast elements here. So we've got a few medallions, we've got the headers, the sills, and then some pedestrian level lights that will be decorated. That's how we addressed that. North facade generally unchanged from when you saw it last. This rear facade, the only change here is that previously we had these units, which are right here on the key plan, were cam levered a little bit over the building, the, the perimeter of the building on the first floor. And it, it got a little too close probably to the stream valley buffer, and we were struggling to figure out how it would be built. So we pushed that in, and as a result, this unit that's on the other side of these windows here grew the other way, which it took the secondary egress from the terrace. So as a result, we added that egress to the outside. This stair will be attached to the building facade, so we don't, we don't have any issue with it going into the stream valley buffer. So that, that's the change there from the last time you've seen it. This facade, pretty much unchanged from the last time you saw it. And finally, yeah, we're, we're looking forward to getting this under construction, and we thank the staff and you all for your input, it really made it a lot better.
And as I said, you resolved that. Did you net any more or less parking when you reconfigured the ramp?
We ended up with more parking.
You did?
Than previously, but it, it probably, I don't know that it was a result of that change, just tweaks here and there.
Okay. But you didn't that last, I don't really substitute those, okay? On one of the elevations, it might have been the kind of the rear, but the parapet doesn't look particularly generous. You have much rooftop equipment on this programmed or?
Yes, all of the condensers will be up there, but they are all pushed back because of noise issues we have with the existing units that we have. We put all the condensers right over the corridor, so it's centered.
Sure.
On the roof, not near the edge at all.
There's a pretty dramatic change in elevation coming down from kind of the center of Spectrum or the, you know, plazas. Has been some sideline studies to make sure those are screened well enough with the parapet?
That has not been done. But, but yeah, we can look into it.
Okay. It's deceiving how much of an elevation change there is from the south end to the north. So you might, you might get some views. All right, any questions? There is somebody watching in the attendees online. So text staff, would you please play the online instructions?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right, good. So I'm waiting for that. Is anyone in the audience here to comment tonight? I'm thinking it's all applicant's team at this point, or staff. Okay, seeing nobody, and I don't see a hand up, at least not yet, from the attendees. Let's go ahead and move to the recommendation, please. Jasmine?
So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the testimony and the record, the staff report, findings, and recommendation grant SP-9569-2023, final site plan approval, and an amendment forest conservation plan, EMV-9570-2023, finding in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with two conditions.
Perfect. Any concerns?
No.
No? It's, it's a great look of building. I, I don't want to get down the road and find out that you can see lots of garbage up on the roof. So would, would you, would you add that, please? And just work with staff to make sure that there's at least a, a careful, careful look at, at what that's going to appear to be from wherever the high points are. I mean, they actually be up around the corner, I don't know, but just take a quick look at that with staff, if you would. And Jasmine, I don't know if that's a condition or just for the record, you guys can take care of it. What do you think?
We can add that, it's building permit.
A permit? Okay. It's in the record, you guys know it's there. Please have a look at that. And any other?
I just, my, my assumption is that at some point we'll see a signage package, assuming it's, you know, requires our approval, because there's not really branding or building signage as part of this.
So there is an approved sign package for the overall Spectrum development, so any future signage will come as a permit. We just ensure that it's in performance with that sign package.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's not in performance that it comes out of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's a great building. Yeah, let's get it built.
Great to see it finally come through. I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, it fills, it fills a very unnecessary void at that corner. And I think it gives a finish to the Spectrum as well as to our city, because it is at the city line basically.
Right.
So this is a great cornerstone, if you will, for the community and for the city. I'm glad we avoided a bank, it's all good.
No agenda over here.
Well, at least it's not a nail shop.
Yeah, that's true. Uh-oh, now you're going to get.
Any other concerns or questions? Okay, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the testimony and the record, and the staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant SP-9569-2023, final site plan approval, and amendment forest conservation plan, EMV-9570-2023, finding in compliance with Sections 24-170 and 24-171 of the city zoning ordinance with the two conditions, is read into the record.
Second. So moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, the Pete Henry Show is over for tonight. Thanks for, thanks for your work on these projects, appreciate it.
Oh, yes.
All right, very good. All right, that takes us now to from the commission. Danny, may I start with you?
It's great to be back. I've been through a lot. Had to learn how to walk all over again, but I am walking, and that's all that matters.
Glad to have you back, Danny.
I'm glad to be here with you all, and the staff has been wonderful, meeting with me and getting me caught up to certain things. So I appreciate that. I put a couple notes, you know, always have something to say, but I want to congratulate the chairman and the vice chair on their election for this fiscal year. And I also want to wish my former colleague, Sharon Cantrell, goodness and grace as she moves on to other things. I'm not going to say bigger and better things with other things, because she was a great colleague, and I'm going to miss her. The other thing is that APA Maryland and the MPCA, I'm excited to say, are going to be collaborating on an annual conference. APA Maryland hasn't had a conference since 2019, and we had an amazingly successful conference last year. And they want to collaborate with us.
Oh, great.
And join with us. So I'll have, we're in the preliminary stages, I had a meeting with them this evening, prior to this one, of course, but I'll have more information. But I think it's going to be great.
That's good, that can be big, be a big meeting, right?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be good.
Hundreds of thousands of people, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Danny, keep us posted. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, thanks, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Anything tonight?
Nothing, Danny.
All right.
Uh, no, nothing for me. Welcome back, Danny.
Thank you.
Feel anything?
Nope, nothing here, nothing.
All right, Greg, what do we got from staff?
Just a couple updates. The, this upcoming Monday, February 26th, is the joint work session for a retool, a zoning update. There's also another follow-up work session scheduled for March 11th on that same topic. I haven't polled you yet, but right now, the public hearing for that is scheduled for April 15th. I'll be sending that email to everyone shortly to poll you on your availability for the joint public hearing. And the last thing I have is just a reminder that your next meeting is Wednesday, March 6th.
We're in March already.
We're in March.
All right. Thank you. Brian, anything tonight?
No.
Okay. If there's other, Brian, thanks for being here, appreciate your support on all, all things traffic.
It's a great report, actually, so, thank you.
All right, thanks all, have a good night, we're adjourned.